I call to order the Wicklow City Council meeting on November 12th, 2018. Sandy, please call the roll.
Yandello.
Excused.
Bogo.
Present.
Jaworski?
Here.
Koski?
Here.
Levon?
Here.
Sakis?
Here.
Saloto?
Here.
Approval of council minutes. Motion. Second. Moved by councilman Bogo, seconded by councilman Sakis, to approve the city council minutes from October 22nd, 2018. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Reporting communications for the mayor, safety director.
Yes, good evening, everybody. And first off, a thanks everyone who helped out with the voting day. On Tuesday, absolutely had a successful levy campaign. And after that levy passed on Tuesday, and now with finance director, start working on the budget, continue working on the budget. As I mentioned before, I'd like to present, or I'd like to plan to present a full year's budget at the finance committee meeting, instead of doing temporary budget, and then spending the first quarter of 2019 going back and forth, working on the budget. I really believe we can get it done in a matter of a couple meetings, and really save a lot of time, and set a good example for other municipalities in the area as well, on how to be efficient and work within our means. We're beginning to plan for the LED conversion of streetlights. The funds for this either cover the NOPEC grant, and we're also looking into the streetlighting fund, which has to be spent very specifically. Now, it would take quite several years to cover the entire city, but it would be a savings to the resident as time goes on. That's a millet everyone's charged for a streetlight, 1.15 mils. So hopefully, we can reduce that over the next couple of years. One issue I would like to place into committee is an income tax abatement program. I know we were talking before the meeting, we do have something on the website right now, but I believe it's just the state of Ohio, job creation tax credit, so I've got some ideas to make things a little more flexible. So for example, one of the eligibility requirements here is businesses must be able to create these 25 new full-time jobs in three years of operation. So what if we have a situation where it's a company that's looking at moving, or looking between us, one location, they only have 10 employees, but they're all professional services, and it's a good payroll? We should have something in place where if needed, we can implement that on a smaller scale, and just be a little more flexible. So I was thinking if we can have even maybe 15, 20 minutes after the finance committee meeting next week, to discuss that, and go over a couple differences. And also with that, we do have the dog ordinance in committee as well. I believe we need to have a conversation on that fairly soon. I keep receiving complaints, you know, councilman Sakis, we heard from a couple residents at the last block watch meeting, so I think we need to, and even between that, I've heard some other...
Why, just could you elaborate what it's a dog of words, what it's in?
Well, with animal at large ordinance in regards to what happens, or some of the complaints we get, or just to review it, see if we need to restructure anything. Meeting with superintendent Speja Thursday morning to discuss a couple ideas regarding the future of facilities. So if anyone not aware, they're meeting every Wednesday night, I'm not sure where, but I think it's 7 o'clock at night, they're meeting every Wednesday for the next almost month and a half, to go through this planning process for their facilities, and just continue to support them in their endeavors. And I'm still working on the housing CRA, should be able to finish that up in the next few weeks. That'll be for the home addition renovation tax abatement program, and I expect that to be well in place, considering its approval by council for the 2019 construction season. And that is, that's all I have.
Any questions or comments for the mayor? I will place income tax abatement program into the finance committee, and call a meeting on Monday, for 7:30 on Monday, the 19th of November. Into reports and communications from the director of law.
Well, thank you, Mr. Council President, I don't have any report this evening.
Any questions or comments for the law director? Amendments, communications from the council president? I have none. Amendments or additions to the agenda?
I need to ask for executive session after this council meeting to discuss the labor negotiations.
Okay, we'll move executive session for labor negotiations to line out 18, and move adjournment to 19. I'd like to ask that we place or add ordinance 2018-46, which should be on third and final reading, to ordinances A, and slide currently A, B, and C down to B, C, and D. I'll entertain a motion for that, please. Moved by councilman Jaworski, seconded by councilman Bogo, to add ordinance 2018-46 to the agenda. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Are there any other additional amendments or additions to the agenda? Seeing now move on to administrators. Please chief vice.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to my monthly report, I would like to report on unfortunate incident that occurred actually Friday night. There was a party up at Fairwood Hotel for a 13-year-old boy. There are two groups, group birthday parties going on, and there were probably 10 to 15, 11 to 13-year-olds that were ready to pull up. And they started dischoweling. The child, his birthday was, got down in the deep end, and they lost sight of him. Not sure how long he was under the water. One of the other patrons that was there saw him under the water, brought him up. We got the call, patrolman Cook and Sabrino got there, began CPR, and moved him to the location he was at, because he was drenched in the water, and drying the patient, put AED pads on, got no response. Fire department showed up and they worked him, but unfortunately, passed away. The family is putting together, it's a poor family, so they've got a GoFundMe account. Actually, you can find it on the police report page, they will let the, make a donation to cover the funeral expenses. Additionally, we had drug overdose death. Not 100% sure who was at the fair bridge. The victim ended up being dropped off at the hospital. It's a long, convoluted story. We ended up arresting three females at the hotel, that were with this gentleman, in the passenger. Got cocaine, syringes, and some other paraphernalia out of the room. One of the reasons I bring this up, is we've actually been fortunate, we've just been somewhat of a lull in the action. For lack of a better term, over the last couple of months, we've had less opioid activities, and that's actually a trend that we're actually seeing throughout the county. I think I mentioned before, chairman of the Lake County Narcotics Board, and I sit on that, which is the Lake County Narcotics Agency, and I get report every month, and I see that arrest for heroin opioids are decreasing. It's good news, but unfortunately, it's still out there. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments for the chief? Councilwoman Saloto?
Yeah, just so the family itself, how do you find that GoFundMe page? Is it, is there a name you can give us, or nothing?
It's on our Facebook page.
It's on Facebook, okay.
Any other questions or comments for the chief? Thank you, chief vice. Fair chief powers.
Thank you, council president. Nothing other than my previously submitted report, it was a tragedy all the night. You know, hug your kids, tell them love, because sometimes you might not have that chance. It was very difficult for my guys, as well as the police officers on the scene. We deal with those all the time. We had a attempted suicide last week, gunshot. Behavioral health is a problem, not only in our community, but a lot of communities. That's all I have, council president.
Assistant mayor, may I go?
Thank you, council president. One thing to add to our written report, Friday is the Maple Street bid opening. We're just checking before the meeting, the bidder's list, we have 10 contractors that have taken out plans for this. That's, it's quite a bid, it's a record, and hopefully we'll get some really good prices for that, for this project.
That's all I have.
Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Koski?
How is the WOW installation going? Any use on the towers or anything?
That's going along well. I believe that they were able to order the smaller boxes for the towers, instead of those two-foot tall ones. I'm not sure if they were able to get the 13-inch ones, I think they might have been 14 or 15 inches, but they're at least a little bit smaller. I did talk to their representative today. There was some damage to a bench on Euclid Avenue, and they were very concerned about it. In fact, they called me and said, hey, we just want to let you know, if something got broken, we're going to fix it. So they're being pretty conscientious about that, so it's great.
Any other questions or comments to the city on the air? Assistant mayor. Service director, Dan Brozzi.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're definitely slowing down now with our roadwork. I think our asphalt, in-house asphalt is about done for the year, we started breaking down some of the equipment. As long as the concrete plants are open, we still plan on doing as much roadwork as we can, road openings, catch basins like that. Leaves, they're starting to fall, it's about time. We're kind of concerned with the snow falling in the leaves. And then, Ms. Koski, as far as WOW, I would like to say this, we probably are getting maybe, I'd probably go to two or three calls a week, different, I wouldn't say they were complaints, they were more like questions, but WOW's response has been fantastic on everything, everything. They respond quickly, they call me back, they answer their phones, they go to the resident's house, and they pretty much take care of the problem, so they've been doing great for the city.
Thank you.
Next, uh, thank you, police director. Any questions or comments for the service director?
Joe, there's a Lake Tran bench sign, it's all mangled, on 84 from Lincoln. I don't know if, I don't know what time it happened, I don't know if who else noticed it, but it looks like a car ran it over.
I can hold a Lake Tran, I'll come through.
Oh yeah, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, if it's a struggle, we'll move, sometimes if it's down, we'll move it, we'll bring it to the garage, usually you come and pick it up, and then they reinstall it.
Okay.
I get ahold of somebody tomorrow.
Any questions or comments? Councilman Jaworski?
Joe, when is the second shift coming?
We are tentatively going to do it the second week in December, depends on how the snow goes, and we're going to hold off third shift for as long as we can. Just going to see what the weather does.
Any other questions or comments for the service director? I think you may see it in the address. The only commission is that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Council President, I have nothing to add to my monthly report.
Any questions or comments for the service director? Assistant mayor? Director of operations, stop.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, just one thing to add to my monthly report, I'd like to invite everyone to our annual turkey hunt this Saturday, at 11:30, right here behind City Hall. We have it rain, snow, shine, or any, any weather condition, we have it. So I'd like to invite everyone to attend that. For all ages, all ages.
Any questions or comments for the service director? I'll now open up for all your participation, anyone likely addressed with the city council, please stand, say your name, and address, and the service director. Each person will have five minutes maximum of time, with anyone likely addressed with the city council. This sort of act.
Thank you. Ted Kovali. 29831, Philip Savini. The northeast corner of Lakeland Boulevard and Warden Road, you got to get a reduced speed ahead. These people are heading through, they're trying to run light, and they're blasting into a 25 mile an hour zone. Might catch the guy who mangled that bench? Thank you.
Okay, so I spoke with Brad earlier in the week, and I called service director, and I asked him, I said, kind of expressed what he asked, and can't put a reduced speed sign because you would have to change the speed limit, but a suggestion was made. Okay, when you're going north on Warden Road, it is 30, from Euclid Avenue, it's 35 when you're AED. When you cross over Lakeland, continuing on Warden Road, it turns to 25. The speed limit sign, however, is behind the bridge, so it's hard to see, and I don't know, so maybe if it's moved, there's open grass area in front of the bridge, if we move it, that might let them know, maybe that'd be something that could resolve that?
Excellent idea.
So I know that, would be, maybe we could take a ride, or?
Yeah, I could drive past it tomorrow even.
Okay. And you'll see going north.
Joe?
Yeah, we did talk about that, even if we put something on the south side of the bridge, that even said reduced speed ahead, might give people a heads up on it.
Was that the issue? Are we allowed to put that sign up that says reduced speed, or 35 to 25?
My suggestion was, to councilman Sakis, was to put, just a speed limit 25 sign, instead of being on the opposite side of the bridge, just on the south side of the bridge, so that they see it as soon as they, you can see it before you hit the intersection.
Yeah.
Or see it as soon as you turn right onto the Warden, instead of waiting to go on the bridge. Basically, more, we're along the residents' point, because most people traveling through the intersection.
You're already flying.
Not turning right, but you should see it as you hit the intersection, it's 25.
We could do that.
Yeah, if there's room for it, just go and move.
Okay.
Okay.
Would anybody else like to address with the city council? Would anyone else like to address with the city council? If not, all our audience participation closed. Committee reports. The committee at the whole met on November 5th, 2018. Called to order at 7:00 PM. The purpose, Kimball garbage contract, city council rules, and the Green Ridge Golf Course property easement. Present, Yandello, Bogo, Jaworski, Koski, Levon, Sakis, Saloto, also present, Barbish, Zili, Amika, Dan Brozzi, Sack. Mayor Barbish informed the committee that he and law director Zili have met with Kimball's representatives about modifying section 5 of our current garbage collection contract. In summary, section 5 currently states that if residents do not pay their Kimball bill, the city would be responsible for paying the bill. Then the city would attempt to collect the unpaid fees from the residents. The city has been paying this guaranteed payment to Kimball at approximately $25,000 per year, and the administration has not been able to have all the money reimbursed from a negligent residence. Councilwoman Saloto and councilman Sakis questioned the mayor, Kimball had been getting paid by both the city and the residents, as they note instances where Kimball stopped collecting refuse at a house if their bill was not paid. The mayor did not believe that was the case, but said he would look into it. The modified section that the mayor and law director are proposing would remove the city's responsibility for paying for delinquent residents. Kimball will assume full responsibility for providing any services to residents who do not pay their bill. If a resident doesn't pay, Kimball can retrieve their cards and stop services for the resident. If passed, this would go into effect on February 1st, 2019. Kimball has agreed to this mod, Kimball has agreed to modify this section, but they will be implementing a 3.5% increase on garbage rates for all residents of the city. The 3.5% does not include their annual consumer's price index increase per year. The administration told council that if a resident doesn't pay Kimball and has their services stopped, but continues to put out garbage, they will be cited as a nuisance. The city will hire a third party to remove the garbage, and the resident's tax duty will be charged. This item is reported on a committee. Council president Levon suggested to the committee that we modify certain sections of section 121.01 of the codified ordinances. One section was rule 7, order of business. As the council president suggested, we add the economic development coordinator to the agenda for every council meeting, so that we don't have to make a motion to add her every time she is president and has a report. He suggested modifying similar rules on how each member of committee or council needs to be contacted for a special meeting. Currently, council members need to be contacted at their place of residence, or in their mailbox at City Hall. He said these rules were put in place in 1990s, and we should just be able to contact each other via email for notification of any special meetings. Lastly, he suggested modifying the entries of councilmen to be changed to councilperson in the rules. The committee had no objections to the suggestions that council president presented, and recommends to council that they authorize a law director, law director to modify codified ordinance 121.01 with the suggestions that council president proposed. This item is reported on a committee. Council president Levon was contacted by the residents, who purchased a house in front of the Green Ridge Golf Course from the city a few years ago. They currently have an easement on a portion of the land between the property line and the golf course fence. They would like to purchase this piece of land, so that they can build onto it. The law director advised the committee that we are not able to sell the land directly to anyone, as we would have to put it out to a public bid. Also, we would probably have to do a lot split on this land. This information would need to be discussed with the current owners of the home, to see if they wanted to still proceed with purchasing the land. The committee decided to take the action, and allowed council president Levon to pass along this information to the homeowners. This item is reported on a committee. Meeting adjourned at 7:55 PM, respectfully submitted. I'll make a motion to authorize a law director to enter in an amended contract with Kimball. Moved by councilman Levon, seconded by councilman Bogo, to authorize a law director to enter in an amended contract with Kimball, modifying section 5. Sandy, please call the roll. I'm sorry, councilwoman Saloto?
I agree, just one more thing on that topic. I would like to, I don't know if we need to put this into committee again, but discuss the fact that with respect to the garbage situation, Kimball has been double dipping, and residents are paying, and the city is paying. And I don't think it would be such a bad idea to look back and see what might be going on. So I'd love to get together with you, or maybe put a little group together, and take a look at that, because that could be a large amount of money that we've been paying out to Kimball. And I know there was a $25,000 total amount. I mean, I don't know if it's just all figured into that $25,000, or if it's, if you can like look at every single bill, but the garbage is not collected until the bill's paid. So I think we need to look a little more closely at that. If you wouldn't mind, can I put that back in committee?
Well, we can, I don't have it in committee under miscellaneous on the agenda, you can add that back, and put it in committee, and then call the meeting on it.
All right.
But at this point, we do need to scroll down this motion, but yeah, we can do that later on this meeting.
All right, I'd like to do that, please.
Any further discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Yandello, I'm sorry. Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a law director to modify codified ordinance 121.01 with the suggestions that council president proposed. Second. Moved by councilman Levon, seconded by councilman Bogo, to authorize a law director to modify codified ordinance 121.01 with the suggestions that the council president proposed. Discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Yeah, I'm, uh, sorry, Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
I'll form as law. Keep the committee report.
I do. I thought you had a room looking during, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
All right. So the legislation and welfare committee met on Monday, November 5th. In attendance were Joe Sakis, and Jason Yandello, Tom Bogo, Jaworski, Levon, Koski, Barbish, Amika, Dan Brozzi, Sack, and Zili. It was called to order at 7:55. The topic was the sign review board removal, and surrounding ordinances with respect to that. Discussion was really around whether we should disband the sign review board. There was lots of negative input from the sign review board members, to the city council members at the last council meeting. The sign review board members were upset that the decision may be made, as they do see a real need for this type of committee in Wicklitt. So mayor Barbish stated that the actual sign review board meetings are cumbersome and time-consuming. He feels that approval should be done by electronic voting. Law director Zili shared that he would be against, it would be against the sunshine laws to accept, or to attempt electronic voting in any way. He also stated that putting Ray Sack alone as the decision maker on the sign review would open the city up to some lawsuit potential. The mayor again stated that we should disband the sign review board. Sakis felt that the sign review board was created in the 50s, therefore it may be archaic. Ms. Koski said that the sign review board members have been helpful to get the correct signage, the readability, the colors, the graphics, et cetera. She said that the members take their responsibilities to heart, and it's a good service, especially for our new businesses. Ms. Saloto also stated that she agreed that there is some value to the sign review board for the new business guidance. Ray Sack said that he was able to get the reviews scheduled more frequently than the 30-day wait, that was sort of the idea that the mayor had proposed, it takes like 30 days for someone to get a review. Mr. Sack felt that they are useful, and they happen within just a few days for the most part. Mr. Levon stated that from his experience, the sign review board rarely denies any signs, or even changes them. He felt that they are potentially making people unnecessarily wait for new signs. And Mr. Jaworski stated that often the business owners do not even attend their own sign review board presentations, they send the sign maker instead. He reminded council that the board of zoning is still the board of record for these, and for ultimate appeals. Ray Sack stated that he wants to make the ordinances more simple, scrap the old, and make them less cumbersome, as long as we're making changes to the sign review board, or removing it, whatever we should do, he felt that we should also take a look at the ordinances and make them more up to date. So the recommendation was to remove the sign review board, and also that Ray Sack will be revamping the ordinances for council review.
The signature of the committee had decided which direction or avenue the council would like to move?
Yeah.
Remove of the sign review board?
I'll entertain a motion to authorize a law director.
To, to, to.
amend the sign code? Sign review board?
Still need the sign code.
Okay. Should remove the, the sign review board from the. I'd like to make a motion to authorize a law director to amend the sign code, to remove the sign review board from the ordinance. Second. Make a motion. Second. Moved by councilman Sakis, seconded by councilman Bogo, to authorize a law director to amend the sign code, to remove the sign review board from the ordinance. Discussion? Councilwoman Koski?
I still feel that the residents that are members of the sign review board perform a duty that is above and beyond what Ray, although he is very good at his job, but I think they catch things and perform duties beyond what Ray is able to do just on his own, and I think they still do a good service.
Councilwoman Saloto?
I also think they provide a good service. I think they also are sort of face of, you know, Wicklitt, working with a new business, or maybe there's an entity that reaches out to help a new business put together a sign, or even an older business that's trying to revamp a sign. I think it's a nice thing. I don't think it hurts anyone, I think it only helps.
Mayor?
I had spoke with a client of mine who owns a sign company, after the fact, I know a couple of them in the Chamber of Commerce. When I told the news after the committee meeting, she was very excited, because again, the business owners oftentimes don't come to these meetings, it's the person who owns a sign company who's also at work at 7 o'clock in the morning. So they just, they don't find it useful, they find it cumbersome, they're not, the sign review board isn't necessarily helping the people put signs together, the sign company is. And then in regards to the ordinance change, building commissioner, one of the pieces of feedback I've received is, it makes it more difficult when cities will take a piece of this ordinance, a piece of this ordinance, a piece of this ordinance, and then put it into their own, they think that they're being helped. There's no continuity between Wicklitt and Willowick. And of course, every city's a little bit different, but I'm going to get some feedback from a couple folks that own those sign companies, for while we're changing the rest of our ordinance, to try and make it a little more streamlined, or help the business owners at that point, make it a little easier to order.
I agree with you, councilwoman Koski, that those, I've been on the council, sign review board twice, and I believe those residents do give their time, and they are great people. I just think that better time could be spent. From those times, very little of those signs have ever been refused. And again, as councilman Jaworski had stated, I never really saw a business owner who was all a sign person, that was a representative of the company. And all the signs were already presented as is, they weren't asking for the sign review board's input. Their signs were already here, and if they had to change something, you know, they asked them, they'd ask some questions about what color, if it's illuminated, none of this would really change what the sign actually was, or going to be intended to sign, so. Although- Although at one time, I think it was a great thing and I appreciate all the residents that have volunteered their time on there. I just think it's, it's, it's a burden on our businesses or future businesses that we, that could be, you know, avoided.
Councilman Bogo.
I, uh, through the years, have gone and purchased many signs at three different locations. And it was my experience as I never came up to any of the meetings with the review. But usually the sign person that you have hired knows the rules and what are the rules and usually works that through you. And you have to abide by the rules. Maybe if you're applying for some kind of variance, I don't know if that's possible through the science. I don't think there is the rules out of the rules and that's it, so. Yeah, anything to streamline that process is a good thing. That's my personal opinion.
Sorry. Any further discussion? Sandy, please go to the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
No.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
No.
Commission reports? Councilman Saloto.
Yes, I have the Keep Book of Beautiful Commission Report. Um, this is for, I'm not sure, they actually didn't have a meeting. It's just sort of a, an update on what's happening with them. Uh, Community Award winner, Keep Book of Beautiful won the two thousand and eighteen Keep Book of Beautiful Community Award for Populations Less Than Twenty-five Thousand. The award recognized Keep Book of Beautiful for their projects in litter prevention, recycling, consumer greening, community greening, excuse me, beautification and public awareness and adult education. Joshua Fowler and Ronnie Bubanix accepted the award at the annual Keep Ohio Beautiful Meeting and Awards Program in Columbus on November seventh. The Lowe's Hero Brand is on October twenty-second, was on to October twenty-second. The Willoughby Lowe's store worked with the Service Department to replace the landscaping retaining wall. Keep Book of Beautiful received a thousand dollar grant from Parker Hanifin to host two onsite shredding collections. The holiday lighting open house is on the thirtieth. At City Hall, well, actually on September twenty, November twenty-fourth, excuse me, from six to eight P M. It's the thirtieth annual Holiday Open House. A total of sixteen thousand donations have been received to fund the horse-drawn carriage and the bicycle raffles. Santa Claus, carolers, kids crafts and refreshments will add to the festivities. And due to the holiday schedule, Keep Book of Beautiful will not have a formal commission meeting in November, December, and the regular meetings will resume in January.
Any other commission reports?
Seeing the whole business, amount of new business, the opening number sixteen seventy. Uh, it's free water main.
Who has the ordinances?
Ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash forty-six. An ordinance providing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Wickliff, Ohio for the period beginning January first, two thousand and eighteen and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, third reading.
Suspension. Right. Adoption. Adoption.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Koski, seconded by Councilwoman Saloto to adopt ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash forty-six as presented. Discussion? Sandy, please go to the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash forty-eight. An ordinance limiting assessment for unpaid bills and costs of cutting noxious or poisonous weeds, vines, tree limbs or grasses growing upon parcel of land in the city of Wickliff, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Zekus, seconded by Councilwoman Saloto. Suspend the rules of council and place ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash forty-eight on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please go to the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second. Moved by Councilman Zekus, seconded by Councilman Bogo to adopt ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash forty-eight as presented. Discussion? Sandy, please go to the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash forty-nine. An ordinance providing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Wickliff, Ohio for the period beginning January first, two thousand and eighteen and December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Zekus, seconded by Councilwoman Saloto to place ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash forty-nine on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please go to the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Zekus, seconded by Councilwoman Koski to adopt ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash forty-nine as presented. Discussion? My next record goes, quick question.
Yes.
The deposits fund for the buildings bargain.
Yes.
This, I believe this is the second year in a row where we've had to move money out of the line. Is there a way to just put a number in there? Because it's, it's money that's coming in that isn't ours and we're just holding out to you but we don't seem to have the money to pay those contractors back.
Well, it's not that we don't have the money, we don't have the approved appropriations, so.
So going into budget time, up next year, since we're budgeting next Monday, we can just budget a large, a number out there, in theory. Just have the money just in case it goes forward.
Right, whatever we budget for revenue, we'll budget as an appropriation, therefore, anything we get in will be able to.
Okay. Any further discussion? Councilman Jaworski.
Thank you, Council President. I think that's a wonderful idea. These contractors should be getting the money back that they, um, that they put in and it's their money. We shouldn't be holding it longer than we need to.
Any further discussion? Sandy, please go to the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash fifteen. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance of the city of Wickliff, Ohio to transfer sums of money from various funds to others and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Zekus, seconded by Councilwoman Saloto to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash fifty on third and final reading. Discussion? Sandy, please go to the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Zekus, seconded by Councilwoman Saloto to adopt ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash fifty as presented. Discussion? Sandy, please go to the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Seeing the resolutions and the other legislation? Miscellaneous? Councilman Saloto.
Um, so I'd like to add to committee, I guess, the, what committee would it, Legislation and Welfare Committee?
No, you can put in the Finance Committee Hall. Probably what you could find here. Okay, we'll put in the. We'll put in the Finance Committee, um, that, uh, to.
Take a closer look at.
Kimball's collection of money.
From both residents and the city.
Here. We'll add that to the Finance Committee.
I also, can I also request another committee?
You want to go to the other legislation?
I'd like to, to request Legislation and Welfare Committee meeting for next week. Can we add it? It'll be short. Eight o'clock. Um, to discuss the Colton Park Water Line easement. That's requested by the Lakeview Water Department.
Okay, that's, the easement, oh, that's, they're thirty in my committee. It's in the committee hall. Easement?
Okay, I thought it was going to switch them off.
No, um, I don't.
This is the water. This is the water.
Yeah.
That's not the easement from the house.
I have Lake County Department of Utilities request for the installation of the water line. That's, that's mine, I, but I don't know, why would that, why would we thought that was a legislation of welfare?
I assume it was because it was less, we need to pass some type of easement. I just, I, I thought it was put in the legislation of welfare.
I think it's, we call it all. All right, so you know what, then disregard that. I will call the Committee at the Hall meeting, you ready to meet on that?
Yes.
And the Committee at the Hall meeting, eight P M on Monday, the nineteenth, to discuss the Lake County Department of Utilities request for the installation of a water line through Colton Park.
That's great, a neat service.
Any other miscellaneous?
There be a dog at large, I don't know when we should, if we should schedule that.
That is in the Legislation and Welfare Committee, it's Animal Control and Penalties, I believe.
We should at least get it on the board, even if it's not next week, but sooner than later. Come on, call it forward on the first weekend of summer.
That's fine.
So you want to go ahead and call that place of our committee meeting?
You think it would be too, too hard to do it next week?
We can do it if you want to do it, I do it next week, we can do it next week. Uh, eight fifteen, I'll say?
Perfect.
Eight fifteen, uh, the nineteenth.
And this is Dog at Large.
So the Animal Control slash Penalties, that would be true. It's a legislation of welfare. Any other miscellaneous? Yeah, entertaining motion to move into executive session to discuss labor negotiations. Councilman. Moved by Councilman Jaworski, seconded by Councilman Bogo to move into executive session to discuss labor negotiations. Discussion? Sandy, please go to the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
We're ready to meet back in five minutes.
It should.